Good evening, everyone. Welcome.
Good evening, Keith.
I'm Keith Roberts. Most of you know that. This is our annual budget forum. We have an audience. Thank you for coming. We have some information. Welcome to everyone, administrators, board members, budget buddies. And I'll get to a little bit more formal talk about budget buddies in a minute. But some of you have been through this before. Some of you are new. At least, I don't know if you guys have been to these before. But we're gonna go through a couple of bits of background information and then have some opportunity for discussion. So here we go. I've never used one of these smartboards before, but Mr. O'Hara showed me. All I gotta do is click there.
Wow. Smartboard.
Twenty-first century.
A lot of you recognize this. This is, is it a mission statement?
Mission, vision.
Mission, vision for Chittenden South Supervisory Union, of which we are very happy to be a part. You'll see this a lot in our materials throughout the budget and other topics. Introductions. I've done myself. Should we go around? What should we do?
Let's do it.
Let's go around. Why don't we go around? And rather than make me do the work, you all can do it yourself.
I'm Sandy Rayman, and I am with Elaine's Centered Assistant at the Central Office.
I'm Bob Mason. I'm Chief Operations Officer of the SU.
I'm Elaine Pinkney. I'm the Superintendent of the SU.
I'm Allegra Miller. I'm the Elementary Co-Principal.
Colleen McKinnon, Heinsburg Board.
Stacy Riley, Heinsburg Board.
Tina Speck, Budget Buddy.
Paul Lasher, Budget Buddy.
Bill Baker, Heinsburg Board.
Kristin Miskavage, Budget Buddy.
Kathy Byer on the board.
Toni Jones, parents.
Nancy Wood, parents.
Jeff O'Hara, Co-Principal.
All right. So you can see Agenda. We've covered item one. Allegra, you're gonna talk about this?
Yeah.
Ms. Miller is gonna talk about the educational program and some budget enrollment history and some questions that are framed for us, although we are not limited to them. Here are some framing questions that you might think about throughout the presentation. What are the essential components you want to preserve? And you, meaning the board, budget buddies, and community members that are here. What areas, if any, do you feel need additional focus? What ideas do you have about preserving the excellence that HCS stands for while continuing to operate the school in a fiscally responsible manner? We'll put those back up at the end, in case you forget about them.
So I'm just going to talk briefly about the core curriculum that we currently offer. If you have any questions, you can just stop me as I'm going along. So as you can imagine, we spend a lot of time in reading, writing, math, probably the most time in those, as well as, hmm, there we go.
You have to.
As well as science and social studies. The children have experiences in that throughout all day long. We do a lot with our reading, writing, and math, especially knowing where kids are, using our assessments to make sure we're being responsive in our instruction to what the students' needs are. Science, one of our main focuses, of course, now is NGSS, our new Gen Science Standards, that teachers have been spending a lot of time also working on. And we're looking at how to make sure we're implementing the curriculum as we should be with that. Social studies or social sciences, we have, actually, we have action plans on all of these core curriculum, including social sciences, to make sure that we're really doing the curriculum in a sequential way that makes the most sense for our students. We offer music, art, phys ed, world language. It's part of our UA schedule. It's different for each grade level. We do have world language, starting in first grade and going to eighth grade. It increases in the amount of days per week as you increase in the grades. Music, art, and PE, music and PE are twice a week, art is once a week essentially, and health is for middle school, and it's three times a week on a trimester basis, actually taught by a certified, a licensed health teacher. So a very robust curriculum that is supported through a library and media program and through wonderful technology that we have and that our tech coordinator meets with teachers weekly to implement in a way that makes sense with the curriculum, so it's integrated into the curriculum rather than an add-on. Any questions about that or additions? Supports to the academic program, special education for those students qualifying for an IEP, literacy and math intervention, so that would be more of our Tier Two supports for kids who need an extra boost or some real specific instruction to make sure that they are at where we would expect them to be. And that looks different depending on the grade level, depending on what the student needs. We, you may remember that we implemented a new system last year for what we call our Tier Two Intervention, hired people called paraspecialists, for lack of a better term. That's kind of what the contractors told us to call them. And they have, they are really integral part of our team structure and in knowing the kids and in working with the classroom teacher and making sure kids get the direct instruction that they need to stay on grade level.
So, sorry, you said implemented last year. Was it implemented beginning September this year or last year?
Right. It was part of the budget discussion last year that you, the changes you made in the budget process last year that we implemented in September. Thanks for the clarification.
Thank you.
Our triple E program, which is a wonderful pre-K program, is centered in this school, but the teacher does several times throughout the week, she reaches out to local preschools and daycares and works with our students that are there. Our positive behavior supports, you might have, hear us say PBIS or our Be a Star program. It's coming from a school, the last school I was in, we did not do PBIS, and so it was a real jump in for me last year getting to know this. And I was, you know, I don't think skeptical is the right word. I just didn't know enough about it, but I can tell you it's an amazing program. It really works for kids. It does create a positive climate, and it's really rewarding kids in the right way for things that they are doing right. So I really am now a strong advocate of PBIS. That was a real change in my thinking.
And I think one thing as well is that we always had, we always talk about the different tiers in the academic program. There's also the different tiers in our Positive Behavior Support Program, which, you know, and Allegra shared the responsibilities and who sits on what committee. But Tier One is kind of the global school, and then you have the Tier Two Committee that takes a look at, you know, challenges that are happening in our school in terms of behavior.
Right. And we expect kids to make mistakes. That's how they learn. And you want, you want kids to make mistakes in an environment that's really, can help them learn the right way to go about things. So the, it's a, it's a great system that's in place to really support kids in their learning of how to be a strong member of our community. Summer program, we have a really great summer school here that works mostly with Tier Three students, so kids who have an extended year program for their IEP, but also works with kids who need some extra support. And we've looked at trying to find ways to make sure that our Tier Two students are really an integral part of our summer programming also. And it's a nice blend of curriculum and fun. Not that curriculum isn't fun or that instruction isn't fun, but there's some real great breaks for them during the day that they're happy that they're here. We have one school guidance counselor, K eight, who is very busy during the day and meets with students and does some instruction and is a great resource for all of us. We also have a school psychologist who's here part-time, who does, you know, the testing that we need to do, but also works with Tier Two and Tier Three, both behavior and academics, to make sure that, works with teachers, so we're really giving students what they need. We have a full-time school social worker, a student assistance professional, SAP, which is a person who works mostly five through eight, teaches some classes, works with students one-on-one or in small groups. We have a great mentoring program for fifth through eighth grade. It's really a very energetic program with lots of adults in the community coming in and working with our students. And we have two behavior interventionists. Once again, we used to have one, and last year throughout the budget process, you added another one. And as, we were talking about going back to, the reason why we added that was because of the budget forum last year when parents were, how do we best, how can we keep supporting our teachers? And we looked at all sorts, Jeff and I looked at all sorts of different things, talked to program council, and realized that if we did a behavior interventionist five-eight and one K four, not that they don't ever cross over, they do, but it would really provide more supports for students and teachers. And we can tell you that it absolutely has. It's been key this year in helping support our, and it's, it's allowed them to be very proactive rather than always reactive. So that's very positive for us. That was a, we feel really good about that decision.
And I think the other, the other piece is, one guidance counselor for K eight
Right. It's a lot.
tends to be a lot. So what we also took a look at is, how can we give everybody the support that they need kids staff with only having one guidance counselor? So the guidance department, as I look at it, you know, there's, there's a team that works for the kids and with the kids, and it's more or less the people that are regular.
Right up there, yeah. And our school's social worker, I, you should know how many families she works with, but she's, I don't off the top of my head, maybe ten families, ten or twelve families? Which could be more kids than just that. But she's very busy and is an integral part of our support system for all students, actually, not just the kids on her caseload. She's a great resource for all of us, too. Kate, you wanted to?
I have two questions. Can you talk a little bit more about SAP? I don't really understand what that is. I don't understand if it's behavioral or academic or a blend of both. And I also don't really understand if it's offering us a different service than some of the other bullet points up there. They all sound like a lot of them cross over. It's very confusing to a layperson who's not in this world.
Right.
So that's one question. And another question is, can you help me understand which bullet points up there are paid for in full by the HCS budget and which ones are shared across the SU that we?
I can answer that question, and then I'm gonna ask Jeff to answer the SAP, because it's not really in the K four world, it's more five-eight, so he has more expertise on that. So special education is now in the SU budget, and we get assessed for that. As of this year, that's a law that was passed, if you want. It's just the way it is. They, Bob and Elaine could probably talk more about that than I could. So that's special ed, and that's triple E at this point. Literacy intervention, math intervention, positive behavior supports, that's HCS budget. Summer programming, depending on the student, if they're on an IEP, that's funded through CSSU now, because that's a special ed student. And, but we certainly fund some of that, too, because there's some regular ed kids that participate. Guidance Department is all S. School psychologist is a SU assessment. So that comes out of the HCS budget, but it, we're assessed for it through the SU. Okay?
So that we need, depending on how many students need the services when you say assessed?
Yeah. And where it's, it's probably on a pro rate. Yeah.
So depending on how many, usually that's by days or half-days.
Right. So it's pro-rated depending on.
Heinsburg tells us how many.
We need four days or a half-day.
Right. Or whatever it was. Yeah.
And then that's based on student need.
School social worker is actually a contract with Howard, so that's all of our budget, but it's, it's just an interesting way to, you know, use other community programs. SAP is another of the purchase services that Elaine was talking about.
Which is partially grant-funded.
And with.
I just want to say, in the old days.
Yep.
It was a hundred percent grant-funded and just as state funding has kind of diminished, federal funding has.
And the mentoring is part of that assessment.
The SAP one?
Yes. For us, because that's the way we have chosen to do it here, for fifth through eighth grade only. And the behavior interventionist is all HCS, both of them.
Okay.
Okay? Jeff, do you want to talk about that?
Is it fair to say anything that comes from the SU that is part of some sort of purchase service?
Yes.
There's nothing that the SU pays for that we don't get some sort of allocation?
No.
Right.
Yeah.
That's my thought.
That'd be nice.
I was making sure I'm clear. Some you said, some you clarified and some you didn't.
Yeah.
So some are purchase services you tell us, how many days or how many point FTE that you need of someone. We kind of are the broker for that. Okay. And some of them are an assessment based on average daily membership. Okay. Just a matter of how the charges go. Exactly.
And social work comes from the state, correct?
Social work?
No. No, we pay for that.
It's a contract service.
It's a contract with Howard.
Right.
Elaine, maybe? Just, anyone's watching and folks, just talk about, we voted last budget meeting to get those services from the SU.
Right.
So you can maybe just clarify, maybe thirty seconds on that, what we decide to purchase from the SU and the benefits of doing that.
So there are several services that we offer kind of as a broker, if you will, to the local schools. School psychologist, what are some of the other ones now?
CY, technology.
Transportation.
Transportation.
Food service.
And so each year, the board gets to decide, we still want to purchase these services from you, and this is what we need. So locally, you'd be having conversations, let's say you, one whole area of Heinsburg shut down and you didn't need it, so.
The decision.
The decision about what you needed for last year happened here, but the allocation would be based on your actual usage.
Okay.
So we go through that process every single year.
I guess what sells it to me is, I mean, it's a great idea anyway, but say, like a school psychologist, we don't have to hire one ourselves. The SU hires it, we can share it with the other schools, and that enables us to probably get, you hire a psychologist full-time, you're probably gonna get a person who's very qualified, committed, saying, this is my job, so we're giving the best services for the money that we can spend. So I was trying to purchase a quarter a day of a psychologist five days a week.
Right. It's really evident to us, too, with our ELL. That's a SU service now for our early English language learners, and that's able to shift, because that's a kind of a population that might shift from school to school, year to year, sometimes month to month. And we're able to make, be sensitive to make those shifts. So it's actually really worked out well for Heinsburg, because if, if all of a sudden we have some families that move in, we, they can, it can be responded to on an SU-wide basis. So it's a, it really works to our advantage.
The other, the other really positive thing about that, I'll just take the school psychologist as an example, because they all work for the SU.
Right.
They do professional development together. Just today, they called me in, because this is a professional development day, they were in the conference room, and they came and got, Sandy and I said, come see this new program we just found that helps kids who are having trouble with fluency with reading, and they were so excited. I mean, that doesn't happen if you're a singleton someplace working with someone. It's because you're in a group and you're helping support each other and learning together, so.
Yeah. So.
The school SAP is, is another good example of a, of a shared person. So she's with us and over at Shavat. If I were to categorize it, she works a lot with our students that are struggling with alcohol, drugs, tobacco, either themselves or at home. That's the easiest way to categorize it, but she's really a support, a student support person. BCAT for my kids against alcohol and tobacco is, is a group that she does. She does Red Ribbon Week, but she's here two days a week. She's housed up in the middle school, so.
But her work is, so academic and behavior, sort of supporting students from both sides? Or is one of the other?
Yeah. So she primarily, I would consider her, she does a lot with counseling, you know, just sitting down one-on-one, but she also is, is doing full classes this year.
And we hope that it's proactive.
Right.
So a little bit of context there, there is a law in Vermont that you have to provide drug and alcohol education. How we choose to do this is through our SAP program. Again, so then that's coordinated through CY. In the old days, had tons of, you know, grants and money, because doing it as a coordinated SU, when you're applying for grants, is definitely a mark on, in, on your favor. So you have to have that service and determine, it just depends on how you want to do that. So I think that your comment earlier about the guidance department, and we have one guidance counselor, everything on that right-hand side is, it's a guidance. It's a school counselor focus. And so it really is for then each school to say, how do we want to do this that's gonna work best for our school?
Yeah, but SAP is also really good for the kids that are on the fringe, that are really at risk and empower them in ways that they might not have been able to empower before and be proactive about the risks of all these different things, and they go out in the community and try to teach people why these things are not bad for your body, why they're bad for you.
Can I ask one other quick question? I don't see OTPT up there. Are they underneath something else?
Special education.
Special, oh, special education. Okay. Just.
Yep. That's another purchase service offer.
Not anymore. Now it's special education part of.
Oh, right. Okay.
Right?
Thanks.
Anything else? Okay. So this is going to shut down at six o'clock, and then we're going to put it back up.
But we do, but we do have an Energy Star certification.
That's right. We do. It's a little magic that happens at six o'clock.
You have to move around.
So, and it doesn't, when, if you've been in someplace, if you've been in the flex space when it's happened before, it takes a long time for that to come back up. We're hoping it doesn't take as long for this one to come back up.
I don't think it does. So.
Thanks for the morning.
I know. So in Richmond, it's gonna be.
Questions?
Yeah, I know. Let's go.
You can have that slide as the last one.
Right. So I'm sure, being just being Heinsburg residents and part of what goes on in this school, you know all the wonderful things that we have. These are official programs. Of course, there's unofficial things that are happening all the time with kids staying after for this or for that, or, and you probably just hopefully saw our school musical, which was phenomenal. Band and chorus is an activity, but also happens during the day, but there's several things that happen outside of school with band or chorus, too. We didn't quite know how to put it, certainly as part of our curriculum, but separate things that kids can join also. The club student council, most of these are all five-eight, except for we will have, starting in January, from January to March, a four-five musical that we've added as an extracurricular program for our fourth and fifth grade students. Last year, it was a third and fourth grade program that parents initiated, and parents did a phenomenal job, and it was so well-received, and so many kids who wanted to take part that we decided, let's bring it into the school and have it part of our extracurricular program. So we're doing it. We have someone hired, and it'll start in January. Kids were already excited about that. So, and so are we. The athletics, I don't know, I report to the school board, the percentage of students that are involved in these activities, it is phenomenal, like seventy percent, seventy-five percent. It's a lot of students that take part in these extracurricular activities, and that just says a lot to the school, about the health of the school, that kids feel they can go and try all these different things that they're doing. Any questions about that? Okay. So.
This is just the tendency where we were last year and, and the budget increase that we had.
Yep. And we added a sixth-grade teacher due to enrollment needs. And these are the reasons why it went up to three point two percent. Here's our enrollment. And once again, we were up this year. This, this is only K through eight. It doesn't include our triple E program. So we seem different numbers, it's because of that. And we do seem to be in an upward trend now. Here's our enrollment, the class size, and the CSSU average, just where our class size is in the middle. We are pretty much within the CSSU average, except for, I'm sure you're noticing the difference here in seventh and eighth grade. It's, see, there's only three numbers apart, but it's, they're huge three numbers.
Mm-hmm.
That's a huge difference there.
So in having them be grouped together, it also skews the numbers a little bit.
Right.
In our seventh-grade classes, we have thirty-one students.
Right. Because seventh grade, of course, your math is done by grade level, so it's a little bit.
And this is an issue that one of our budget buddies had the previous year, and why we made a change.
This is hard to see, so let me just try and get you to the place where you need to be. It's also hard to see in your, your paper copy, too. Two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen, it says that we will have fifty-five kindergarten students, and our total will be pre-K eight, about five hundred and forty, which is an increase in ten. These are not, this is not Bill Smith's numbers. Is it like NASDAQ? I'm not sure. Is that New England?
New England School Development Council.
Thank you.
And the shorter-term numbers are probably fairly accurate. The way out numbers, which we're not really gonna look at.
Right.
Do not include at all consideration of very large potential development.
Right. Right. And they are increasing regardless of that, even though it doesn't have that. Kindergarten is always, you just don't, you just don't know what that's going to be. So it was, I think for this year, was predicted to be forty-nine. It's not too far off of that, so. Hard to know. So, and now we're back to our framing questions, just, we haven't been shut off yet.
I guess it's seven o'clock now, with a daily savings sign.
I know.
Sorry for the worry.
Well, thank you very much. The board and the budget buddies will have plenty of opportunity to ask questions and engage in discussion. Do you have any more questions? We'd be happy to entertain them. Want us to jump right in, Elaine? I think we should jump right into our meeting then.
Okay.
All right. I forgot my iPad. I don't have an agenda. Colleen, can I borrow yours for a moment? Thank you. We'll be getting to your session. So this is an official meeting of the board, so we have some formalities that we have to attend to. So I'm gonna call our special meeting to order at, at, thanks, six oh five. We've finished our community forum, and we are moving on to the budget meeting. Three point oh, are there any adjustments to this agenda?
The kids are in the part two room or the gym. They wash the carpet and live.
Any, and four point oh, an opportunity for audience and communications. Mr. Gelber, come on in.
Hi, Jim. Do you have a vote?
We got you in a hot seat.
We got you a seat right here. Take time to get yourself settled.
Hearing no audience communications, we will jump to five point oh, discussion matters, and we will commence work on reviewing the, and preparing the fiscal year fifteen, sixteen budget. I would like to welcome everyone here, particularly budget buddies. We have three returning budget buddies, Tina Speck, Paul Lasher, and Dave Brown, and we have two new budget buddies, Kristin Miskavage and Jim Gelber, and I'd welcome all of you. I would also like to take this opportunity to recognize Larry Telford, who was a budget buddy with us for four years, all of the years we've asked for budget buddies to participate, who, as most of you know, succumbed to cancer a few weeks ago, and we appreciate his service and express gratitude for that service, and of course, that he will be sorely missed. So five point one, budget work session, we will start with the baseline budget. Who's gonna walk us through that? Mr. Mason?
I might, I might have been elected to do that. On my short agenda, I'd like to review the budget buddy materials that have been handed out, not to go through them in detail, but just to recap what's available and where questions might be directed, if you have some. We will then step into the budget baseline with the assumptions and the baseline budget. And we include, for your reading pleasure this year, a revenue estimate. It's called a very, very early revenue estimate, because the numbers are really soft, but you can't look at your function budget this year because of the special ed changes without having a revenue page in front of you to make sense of it. So we've included that. So the first thing I'll do is go through the budget buddy package. Tell you what. This is what's in the budget buddy package. It's up on the website. I think Sandy has sent the, you need one?
I don't know.
Thanks. Thanks.
It kind of makes you feel part of the group.
Okay, so up on the, Sandy will give you the link to these, but on the web, it's an introduction to the budget process. Those of you who've been here multiple years, seen it from prior years. You get to look at the budget meeting calendar for the next three months through January, the budget development process. We get a look at primary sources of revenue, so you know where the support comes from for your school, which pockets you reach into to keep it open the following year, and the primaries, expense drivers, where you're spending the most money and kind of what category. We'll walk through budget assumptions tonight in the baseline budget. In addition, in the budget buddy package, you've got a capital projects plan, some commentary on the district's fund balance, the cash they have left over from prior years. We'll touch on local tax rate calculation. We don't have anything on local tax rates yet. The commissioner of taxes for the state of Vermont has not published her recommendation on what she would be using, so we normally don't get started with it until after she tells us how good or bad it looks like statewide. Additionally, this year, there's our historical budget analysis. If you're new to the table and you want to understand how this group has worked budgets over the last ten years, that document would be helpful. We have the enrollment data and projections, kind of the details behind that one slide you saw tonight. And then, for those of you really wanting to get into the details of why we fund education the way we do, we have three kind of pamphlet reading material for your enjoyment. A Vermont Act sixty-eight booklet, an overview of public education financing, and finally, the last thing, and the real special ad this year, some of you have asked what the accounting numbers mean on our function and object code, and when we say something to spend supplies, what does that mean? I'm giving you nine pages out of the accounting handbook for the state of Vermont to tell you all that. Sure to keep you excited in the late hours of any evening. So, that's all available. Go through it, get used to it. If you have questions, fire them off to Allegra Jeffery, and we'd be more than happy to help you with that stuff. Okay, any questions on that? Yes, Colleen?
And that's available to anybody, right?
It's available to anybody that has the, oh, it's just available to anyone. Yes.
It's on our budget page someplace.
It's on your school board page.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
It's a nice package.
Who around the table needs a copy of the operating budget assumptions, just like this, those of you who have seen it?
It's on the web, I'm not sure what I'm looking at there.
Two pages? Anybody else need one?
Yeah, I think I deserve one.
I just hand this out so you know what was behind the baseline budgets that we're, that we're working at and looking at this evening. These are the assumptions that the board reviewed and gave us instructions to Allegra, Jeff and I to build the baseline budget. Basically, it has assumptions necessary to move costs forward to the budget year we're working on fifteen sixteen. So, we've made assumptions in salary and benefits, as you can see down through the list. And then, you further down the list, you get the more detailed, you get into little nuanced areas, some of which don't affect Heinsburg. But this allows us to put the document together so that when we hand it to you in about two minutes, you know the basis with which it was created. It wasn't numbers made up by the three of us pulled out of the air. It was based on taking this year's staff and developing appropriate costs to bring them all back the following year. Any questions on budget assumptions? Okay. Who needs a copy of the baseline budget?
I got one.
What's the date, what's the date on?
This one is, well, there is only one baseline budget, so it really doesn't matter what date.
Thank you.
Because I don't think they've changed it yet.
Did you get one?
Mine says updated by Mike Nadeau on eleven-four, two thousand fourteen. Talk amongst yourselves a little.
Thank you, sir.
Anybody else need paperwork while I have it?
Yeah.
I'll take that. No, no, I'll take it.
Okay. I need to come back.
I don't know, I can take those, that'd be better. Thanks.
For the audience.
We're still.
Share.
This is the baby.
Okay.
Yeah, okay. It doesn't look forward to being out, sounds good.
Okay, so I shared with you that in tonight's explanation of the baseline budget, we needed to include a very early revenue estimate. The reason for that, this is the budget year where we transfer all of, or consolidate all of special education at the SU level. What that means is that employees and supplies that were reached, yes?
For the record.
July? Because a statute was passed years ago that stipulated by July first, two thousand fifteen, school districts in the state of Vermont consolidate special ed resources at the SU level. So, we're in compliance with law next year. The same law had in it that in July one, two thousand fourteen, we needed to move professional employees to the SU. So, some of the special ed employees, those on licensed employees, moved already this last July. The balance of the organization moves next July. And what it means when it's consolidated is instead of Heinsburg writing payroll checks and writing checks to cover supplies, all of those will be paid from the SU and then allocated back to Heinsburg based on they're needing special ed services in a fair and reasonable manner. So, so, let's look at the revenue page. There's two big changes as a result of special ed. I've circled on my copy, the special ed section, the block grant intensive, extraordinary, and triple E. You see all of those. These numbers are from, by and large, from last year with some changes based on the service plan. But in next year, the revenue will be allocated based on ADM the same way the expenses are. So, they'll, they'll change. The more important one is right below it is federal IDEAB and pre-revenue. You see the two numbers where two thousand sixteen is unfortunately blank for Heinsburg. You are not going to get that revenue directly at Heinsburg since the employees were sent to CSSU and the revenue is in support of those employees, then CSSU will get the revenue. They'll net it out against the cost of all those employees and send you back the net expense. You good with the accounting so far? Questions on revenue? We're going to update this about four times between now and January when the numbers become a little more accurate. Page two, a function summary. This is the baseline budget. Function order, function, by function I mean by functional area of the school. So, the top line is the instructional program within the school and the costs associated with that. And then, we go through each of the grade levels and teams. In the middle, we do special ed. So, it's a functional budget allocated, costs allocated by the task or the work that's going on in those particular areas. If I were you, I would circle the following numbers. You see the essential skills change? I'm going down the adjusted versus proposed dollar change. That's what moved from fifteen to sixteen. I'd circle that. That's dropped off precipitously because we've moved all the employees out of the essential skills area into other areas of the budget for this budget year. I've talked on the special ed section of the budget. That's the next four big changes that are listed. Keep in mind that the special ed expenses this next year are all assessments from CSSU. They're no longer salaries or benefits or supplies, they're assessments. And then, the last number I circled for your reading pleasure on my sheet was all the way down at the bottom, early learning partnership, an increase of eighteen point seven-six or thirty-nine thousand dollars. Hopefully, I'll connect this to conversations you've heard in the community or at the state level. We, as a state, are committed to bringing dramatic improvement to pre-K services for children in our communities through strengthening programs that are offered by eligible and participating preschools in each of our communities. The way the state law was structured, it's intended to give tuition help to parents so they can give kids access to programs, and it's intended to strengthen the quality of the programs in each of those participating preschools. Naturally, there's money that's required to get that done. Your increase year to year to fund the next hurdle of expenses, an additional thirty-six thousand dollars, ninety, thirty-six thousand nine hundred and thirty-six dollars. And that is principally payments, tuition relief to parents to get kids access to preschool.
Would part of that be because there are more kids in the community taking that?
Yes.
Not just increased expenses of the programs?
Correct. The state, prior to this budget year, we could set locally the amount of tuition relief that we gave by student. We set that across CSSU, in fact, most member schools in Chittenden County, set it at twenty-five hundred. The law is going to land closer to three thousand when it's up. And then, the other thing, to your point, that happens is they're encouraging families and kids to participate, so the numbers are going up year to year. Yes?
So, just to have you look at the, under, right under instructional support, twenty-one twenty, the guidance services, it looks like it's been increased by almost thirty-five percent.
Yes.
That's a coding thing.
Okay.
Right, that was, I think that's how we.
Meaning, there's somebody else in that line?
Right, because it was just coded differently before and I think it was just.
Where should it be coded?
It is, it should be here.
Oh, we fixed it.
We fixed it.
And put the employees in the right category.
Yes.
Prior years, they were in the wrong category or coded incorrectly.
Correct.
Yes, no, I'm with you.
Okay.
Where did they come from then?
I don't remember how it, they were maybe under par.
What went down by thirty-five percent?
I'll have to look.
Part of that is the new position that I, we talked about at the beginning of the meeting, of the behavior interventionist that is now under guidance and I think was under, I think, a para-support position before. So, we're not increasing the number of people at all, we're just putting them more accurately where they should be.
So, Jim, to your point, it's either coming out of instructional or it's coming out of special ed, depending on where the para was coded.
Right.
Can I ask a general question about the new accounting?
You should be.
So, I assume it's a neutral net difference, it's just a different sort of accounting of where it's coming and where it's going, but is that, first of all, inaccurate?
If, if the only change we made between last year and this year was to change the allocation and collection of special ed costs, you are exactly correct. There are some other major things occurring year to year.
Okay, but in the allocation method to the different schools, are there any winners and losers or it's still, it's net neutral?
That's an excellent question. There are winners and losers. In our line of work, whenever you change the way you allocate costs, it never comes out even for all family members. Somebody's going to do a little better and somebody's going to do a little worse.
And how did we do?
I don't have that data in front of me, but you're, well, I do actually have that data. You are, you are on the positive side of that equation. You, your board would have been comfortable with changing to this new allocation.
And I'll add a little bit to that, Dave, and for the record. That's an SU board decision, how to allocate those costs back to each of the schools.
Right.
The SU board discussed it at length with input from each of the local boards, to the extent local board members are not on the SU board, and the SU board ultimately decided to charge those costs back based on ADM, average daily.
Daily membership.
Membership. So, number of kids in each of the schools, as opposed to some other methodologies that we, as the SU board, didn't think was fair and reasonable. So, that, that was, that's a little background on the decision and how that was reached. One of the points, at least in my perspective, of moving the special ed costs to the SU in addition to encourage centralization and consolidation, is to reduce the fluctuations in a local school budget from a very large need or a very small need for special ed, which can change from year to year. And so, while we might have won this year, we very easily could have lost and might lose next year if you did that same analysis, but the point is to level this off because we've been quote-unquote winners or losers in prior years as we've gone up and down in those costs.
And the theory is in the long term, it sort of comes out in the wash?
Yeah.
Yes.
So, I mean.
So, the other two ways that are available to us, because this is a law, we must consolidate the expenses at the SU and reallocate them in one of three ways. ADM, equalize per pupil, and only need to say that equalize per pupil, every K eight is a quote-unquote loser because high school students count for more of a full FTE than elementary students do. And then, the third one was by child count, and there are lots of reasons not to do it that way. So, the board members really did look at every one of those scenarios before they made a decision. Absent a decision of the board, it would be ADM. So, the state is pushing ADM. They're saying if your board doesn't take action, then it will be by ADM.
And we discussed it for at least two years, you know, at length.
Yeah, lots of spreadsheets, looking at how it looked from one year to the next.
Yes.
I was taking a note, so I just want to make sure I got it right. The items affected by that change are the special education consolidation, A one-five-three, and then the two lines below it?
Yes, special ed five oh four and early essential education.
And so, the offset of that is really in the.
We, those three, we need to have this conversation.
The SU special ed assessment would be at the other side.
No, well.
In theory.
No, when we begin to explain special ed and the transfer, we need to involve those numbers. You're still showing your special ed costs on your financial statement.
Yeah, just a different one.
It just happened to be developed by an allocation method.
Right.
Rather than by adding up the services directly for kids, which you would have done in a prior year. It'll, it'll make a little more sense when I go to the next page. Go ahead. Stacy, before I go to the next page.
So, the one eighty-one eight oh four increase is primarily driven by what? Does it increase in services? It's not necessarily just change?
Bob's executive summary would say it's driven by two things. One, the change in services that we needed for this set of children for fifteen sixteen versus the current year. And secondly, I told you I'm eliminating some revenue over here.
Yeah. See, that's what I was trying to.
So, we're going to see a lower cost generally on this side, so it's both.
Okay, okay.
Okay?
Yeah, thanks.
Okay, so that's the function summary, as best as I can explain it in the time allocated to me. The next page is the.
Wait, I got two questions.
Sure.
Remind me what is in instructional programs, the first item, and remind me what's in the office of the principal again, because we always get that question, the office of the principal, I always forget.
Okay, instructional is basically all the teaching faculty salary and benefits and supplies in general that support the pool of professionals and paras generally.
Tier one.
So, it's, yes, it's, it's all of the staff of the school. The rest of the lines by team are principally supply lines in support of.
So, it's salary and benefits.
All of the salary and benefits is up there. Well, all of it, except those that are going to be shown down here.
Right.
So, you got to the office of the principal. That includes your two professionals.
But they're not getting four hundred whatever thousand, so I just want to make that clear.
No, we're getting way more.
No, I can, I can, I can guarantee that that's not the case.
Exactly.
It includes a group of support personnel that work in the principal's office.
That's what I figured.
And it includes any supplies.
Okay.
Or professional services to support general administration of the school. Have I left, offended anyone by what I've left out?
Nope, that's perfect.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Let's go to the object summary. See, what Bob likes to do is circle numbers on it, so then it's easy for me to remember what to say. You'll notice that salary and benefits are down by twenty-one percent as we begin the budget process. That isn't because we're paying people twenty-one percent less. You remember that your special ed personnel are coming out of salary and benefits and going into assessments? So, that's why it's down so low. You hook that to the number for CSSU assessments that went up by two hundred and ninety percent, that's where all your special ed people are now. So, that's why those two are changed. Any conversation about why those numbers changed has to have the conversation about the restructuring we just did. So, are we okay with those two numbers?
Does that include the special ed paris?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, all special ed staff. I circled transportation down a ways, it's minus sixteen point seven-five. You should have a little bit of a celebration because transportation expense in support of kids in regular ed is down year to year. Jeff and Allegra have looked closely at runs and encouraged Ken to be as efficient as possible in providing services to your school, but that's not the entire fifty-two thousand explanation. Some of that is in special ed. Special ed used to be paying for its transportation. Now, it's an assessment, so the cost disappears on this line and reappears above. And then, lastly, it looks like you're saving a hundred and forty thousand dollars year to year in tuition, and you all know the answer to that question. Some of that is in special ed. Special ed used to be paying for its transportation, now it's an assessment. So, the cost disappears on this line and reappears above. And then lastly, it looks like you're saving a hundred and forty thousand dollars year to year in tuition. And you all know the answer to that question. We good?
No, could you be more explicit about that?
Oh, that one?
Yeah.
All of that tuition is tuition paid to, in providing special ed services to kids.
Okay.
So, instead of those two writing a check for tuition to the Howard Center or wherever, they're writing a check to CSSU to pay. Okay, so that's the object. Last page for you.
Hold on.
Oh, oh, oh.
Only because this question stumped us maybe two years ago, and I think it's spelled wrong, which is five nine one hundred. I think that's the principal on our debt service.
That is debt service principal.
I think that's spelled.
No, and we, I, I had the same thing, yeah.
It is?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's correct, yep.
Yeah.
Okay, never mind.
I had the exact same thing though. I, I told somebody that it was spelled incorrectly and then I had to go to the old dictionary.
Thank you, never mind.
Good, good, uh, good highlight.
Isn't it mine that's why I wanted to do that?
Yeah.
That's principal, his parentheses, debt.
Does the accounting annual require you to call fifty-nine one hundred?
Principal, or could we call it debt?
Or could we even just add a little hyphen, debt?
Parenthesis. I'll see what I can do.
He didn't know it would draw that much interest, did he?
Principal debt.
And a, and a road sign was put up.
Yes.
About how much our principal was making at the time.
Yes.
A little sensitive on that one.
Yeah.
Yes, like you remember the journey. Okay, anything else on that? Last page for me to share with you is a comparative on Chittenden, also right, is the reunion assessments and services. In this, in this chart, we break it out by the services you're obligated to pay in general because you're a member of the SU. That's the top four lines. We break special education out in its own line this year because of the changes we just outlined. And then below that, we do all the purchase services that in general you can elect to get from the SU or you can pursue other routes to have that support. So, the top four from office of the superintendent down through fiscal services have gone up slightly year to year. That is in essence salary and benefits on same level of staffing within those four areas. You'll note though that human resources is down even from last year. There is a staffing change of a portion of an FTE that, and a health benefit change that led to that successful reduction. The, the real highlight though is special education. You'll note on this chart's portrayal, it went from one fifty-three five ninety last year to one million nine hundred and ninety thousand, six hundred and eighty dollars. A bit of an increase year to year, but we've already touched on why that's so big. And then the, the purchase services are below. Technology, early learning partnership, our connecting youth program you touched on earlier. Food services is, is a purchase service, but for those of you fluent in budgeting, it is not part of the general fund budget at Hinesburg. The food service operation operates independently of the general fund and its own enterprise fund. And so these costs would be allocated to that separate fund of the school district. And then transportation, English language learners, and we continue to hold math coordinators until the eleven, twelve number disappears off the chart and then it will disappear off the chart. Yes, sorry.
Is this something that you're gonna be going into detail about later as to why these numbers have gone up? Or is that something appropriate to ask about now?
If we do not get any questions, we, the board probably won't head that route. But if there was a question, we could either take it this evening and see if we could answer it or you could add it to the questions coming to the team in between meetings.
Okay, well, I mean, I'd be happy to have it answered either way, but, I mean, that's, it sort of increases, it's like one, over four or five year period, some of the numbers superintendent office have gone up pretty dramatically. Fiscal service has gone up forty percent. Those are all amounts to get, the CY, the CY program went, went from eight thousand to.
Each, each, yes, each has its own explanations.
I'm, I'm sure it does, but at some point during the process.
They have to be effect line by line, but in general, what occurs is, as school districts decide there's additional resource that they'd like to get from the SU. For example, last year, the PT was added as a, as a purchase service, consolidated at the SU level and then provided out. What that does to this budget is it adds it to this budget. So, what you've seen is a journey over those four years where a significantly different array of services has been asked of either the superintendent's side of the ledger or purchase services. In addition, these are assessments, so they're net costs, Jim. So, to the extent some of these are supported significantly by revenue and that revenue has disappeared somewhat regularly over the course of three or four years, the assessments go up to keep the same level of services in place. And that's in essence the story behind CY. CY, as Elaine mentioned earlier, was funded at its inception primarily with grant funding from the federal government. It is now probably a tenth of the level of funding that, that they're now operating. So, the gap is made up by either a lessening of services or additional assessments of schools.
And so could I just clarify process along the same lines? So Keith, how do you, how do you want us as board members and budget buddies to approach our questions related to some of these specifics? Like, you know, first, let's just look, look at CY. I can imagine that there might be a few questions among us about, okay, what was the thought process we went through a couple of years ago to get to where we are now? And we might need to refresh that for ourselves, 'cause that question may come up at an annual meeting. So Keith, do you, how, how do you want us to do this?
I don't think I really have anything to add to what Mr. Mason said, which is if you have a question, ask it. If he or anyone here can answer it, do so. But if we need to regroup and look at notes or go back and do a little bit of work, we can save the question until next time.
Yeah, if I could make a recommendation on process though, it gets a little complex if all thirty-seven people are coming, Jeff, Allegra's and my way between this meeting and the next meeting.
I, I think, I think.
And the structure that we've used past years or you have that works quite well is you designate one of your board members to kind of be the focal point for those questions and then we're, we're lucky to one person to help us.
I think if the question comes up during one of our hearings.
Yep.
Then we can figure out how that's gonna happen. If anyone has a question between the meetings, send it to me. I'll put together a centralized, consolidated list and.
Okay.
And so maybe by the, maybe by the end of tonight, we might have, you know, three or four questions that we know we need a little more info. And then after that, if we think of something, we'll send it to you. Okay, thank you.
Okay, good process. Yes, Stacy?
Is CY, is that the connecting youth?
Yes, it's connecting youth, SAP and mentoring.
Oh, it's all of that.
Plus some other smaller programs, but in essence, most of us think it is SAP and mentoring.
Okay, same thing.
And process for CY, 'cause, you know, Colleen is correct, we, there was a very lengthy discussion as the funding, the grants for that dissipated and the costs for it was moved back on to the users. Two questions, process, so the SU board is the one who ultimately decides what the CY, approving the CY budget?
Yes, correct.
But the locals, including us, get to decide whether we want CY.
That level of service. Like if we, if I'm remembering, when we went through this, there was a point where we, the CSSU board said, yes, this is important, but then some of the local boards were saying, you know, let's talk about this locally and we may wanna pull back a little bit on some of the services. And then my recollection, and it could be distorted completely, was that we came to the agreement that the services were still needed here and we committed to funding it further at the local level. Is that?
Yes, that, that's fair. The other thing.
That's exactly right.
Yeah.
It is a, it is a CSSU discussion item and, and task to finally approve it. We have everybody approve their purchase services early in the process so that we're not in January trying to figure out who's in and who's out of some of those purchase services 'cause it gets very complicated to do the, to do the math. If you were to pull out of SAP, let's say, we just assume, all three of us would just assume know that in September so we can begin planning for that. We do have two boards this year who, in spite of that lecture from me, have decided they're still gonna talk about CY and attempt to change significantly the services they get from CY. Once they finally decide what it is they want to do, then Megan and I and Mike need to figure out what that means to the consolidated picture and, and we'll hold other schools harmless from decisions that they're making in that journey. So, anyway, that's the complicated process. We just assume, hear it early, but if you want us a board to head that way, we'll figure out a way to accommodate it.
Yeah, and, and that's a good piece to remember is that because we're able to consolidate multiple school districts with some of the grant funding, we're able to get more bang for the buck theoretically, hypothetically. So, if, you know, three out of four school districts pull way back, then the CY grant funding wouldn't be as powerful.
Right.
Well, and another thing that I remember was discussed a lot at the time is that when they're putting in for grants, if we're doing work as a, as an SU and every school is involved, that gives us right off the top. You know, a grant reader is looking for certain categories that they can put a check mark. That it is a comprehensive program across the SU gives us those automatic points. There are some grants that if we're not doing that work across the SU, we're not even eligible for the grant. So, there are some tricky things around that and we're trying to navigate that in a way that works for us. And another layer of complexity is, you might remember we were saying, what does SAP do? Well, it does drug and alcohol education, a requirement. So, even the two schools that are looking at changing, they're looking at what was in that right-hand column and they're saying, is there another way we could do it in our school that would work better for us, given our population, that kind of thing? But it doesn't mean that they wipe out that line. It means that they take that line, they recode it, it goes into another category 'cause they still have the responsibility to make sure they're providing those services to the kids. So, it is complicated. There's a whole lot of stuff there.
Okay, I'm done with my segment. I am available for questions under tonight or in between meetings. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mason.
Uh, so I believe that I have the easiest section of all. So, budget forum and first budget meeting are usually on separate nights in years past. And one of the pieces that we always like to do is to revisit the instructional program. Many of the slides that talk about the instructional program are the ones that you just saw during the budget forum. So, I'll be able to go through those rather quickly, but we're also gonna give you a first glimpse of some of the thinking that we're, that we have in terms of decision packets. It'll be a first glimpse, things that, we don't exactly know numbers at this point. We will by the time that the next budget session comes around, but at least you'll have an idea of, of what we're thinking and, and that can saturate for a couple of weeks until we meet again.
So, I'm gonna be up here, but I don't think that there's a huge need to turn and to move because a lot of what is gonna be up here is, are things that you've seen. And the only change on the agenda would be the decision packet piece. When Allegra and I sat down to talk about decision packets, we obviously take a look at the school as a whole and we, we try to determine what's needed to, to best fit all, all needs of students. As, as everybody, most people have been along this process. This is my fifth year here and every year we've had substantial cuts to the budget, every single year. What, what we noticed a little bit last year and what, what we continue to notice is, is how far can we go before we start to see the impact? We, we made a decision last year to add a classroom teacher and I, I can't tell you the difference that that has made instructionally for our, for our students, mental health for the teachers as well. So, but the, the way that the instructional overlay happens is that these, when Allegra and I sit down, we take a look at everything as a whole and say, where do we have things that may be too much? Where, where do we need to add? So, everything that Allegra talked to you about before, these are kind of the, the areas that we look at when we think about where the school is and what we need to do differently. The only thing that I would say about the enrichment, the extracurriculars, is that I am sensing a movement toward more enrichment programs. Here at HTS, we, we had a parent group that took a couple of enrichment programs on, they went really well. Part two is, is looking at providing more opportunities. Their summer program had thirty-five enrichment camps that they offered, from independent people outside of the community to people in-house, teachers, and then obviously, community members as well came in to do enrichment for our students. So, that's, there isn't, there isn't any cost associated with it, but I wanted to highlight that. There's, there's been some questions, kind of as they come up, I'll, I'll answer them. But there have been some questions about the athletics program, what ages can they start? Who's, who's able to be part of the programs, things like that. What it really comes down to is numbers. I know that we, we had to call up a couple of girls, I believe, for the soccer team this year simply because we didn't have the numbers to field two teams. We had the eleven aside and if somebody was absent, then we didn't have enough to field a team, so. So, that, that fluctuates a little bit, but we, we try to keep it sixth, seventh and eighth grade if possible and fifth grade if needed and then if, worst case scenario, if we have to go down to the fourth grade, we do that.
Jeff, let me ask a question. Can I ask, was, now the president asks questions or not?
Yeah, absolutely.
So, that was a question I had. I just had that experience 'cause my kids were of that age, six grade. And, you know, we had a discussion a few years ago about B teams and Paul should speak to the students, you do the boys. I have no perception on the boys, but when we added, cross country was added when? Was that added recently?
Three years ago, four years ago.
Was that long ago? Okay.
Three or four.
So, I just, the question is, is I felt like this year that, I don't know how much money it costs to run a B team, but at least for the girls soccer team, they were really looking for bodies to fill the B team. So, A, is that something we can change on? Do we have to say today we're not on a B team and when it starts, can we say, you know, women enough kids will only have a A team this year? Does that provide us any savings?
So, softball last year, we had a really hard time fielding a softball team. So, then we worked in conjunction with Charlotte, I believe, if my memory serves me right, to, to field A team. Not, not an A team and a B team, but one, one team. So, I think as, as things happen, when you have, let's see, your twenty-one students sign up, it's too much for one team.
Right.
And not enough for two. So, those conversations do happen all the time. We aren't obligated, I don't believe, to, even though we have budgeted two, two teams to field, two teams.
Shouldn't I contract it with a coach, so you gotta pay it in no matter what?
Uh, that happens throughout the year.
Okay.
So, as, as, as we need the, the coaches, they get individual contracts.
Like I said, I just felt like that it was really possibly one soccer team for the girls this year could have filled the bill, maybe. And if we could allocate those resources to other places, that might be.
I think there's a little issue with this, when the athletic directors get together and schedule games, that if they're depending on certain number of schools having a B team, then that does impact the other schools if we all of a sudden don't field one. Do you know what I mean? 'Cause then there's less games for the B, that B team overall with the other schools. So, I think there's a little, there's a little bit of push there for the athletic director. If we can field a team to do that, 'cause it does impact other schools.
I guess the question is, is what's it cost to run a B team?
I, I know what it costs for the, the coach. It depends. If, if a coach is, if they, if they coach both teams, then the, the B team salary is normally down half.
But there's, but there's gotta be transportation or facilities fees. I mean, there's gotta be other uniforms.
It's hard to say, so, uh, three thousand dollars would be the ballpark.
Okay, so it's not, it's not, it's not.
I remember a, a discussion about B team basketball a few years ago that we spent hours discussing. It was like a thousand dollars or something.
I, I, I sat through that too, but three thousand dollars, three thousand dollars if we're, if we're spending three thousand dollars to fill up a team that we don't need, we got kids playing both games, A and, all kids playing both A and B team. we got kids playing both games, A and, all kids playing both A and B-team, soccer games which happened this year, is that a necessary expenditure?
Or can we recruit kids?
What's pretty cool is, there's been a lot of times where I've taken parents interested in coming to Heinsberg on tours of the, the building and the, the school and things like that. And one thing that often comes up is that they like our size because they know that their kids can participate in everything on this page. Where if you're in a larger school system, then it becomes a lot more competitive and things like that. So I, I look at it as a positive, but at the same point in time, I, I hear your concerns. And if there's ever a time where we can't field a team just because of numbers, we're not gonna, we're not gonna bend over backwards to find you.
I think one of the things too is that the cross-country running programs grown tremendously. And that's part of, I think part of the pull from soccer a little bit. And it does go year to year, but that, I guess.
Well, that's why I asked the cross-country question, because it seemed like that, you know, there's a lot of girl, I think we had hardly seventy-seven favorite girls playing soccer this year, you know, because they're all moving across country. So anyway, just food for thought. We need them both.
The enrollment, as mentioned, and Allegra said that triple E isn't on here. That number has grown substantially too. If you get out your magnifying glass and can look at the, the NASDAQ has that on there as well. And it's, it's doubled in the last five years, I believe. Enrollment, and I, I've mentioned the seventh and eighth grade, the large class sizes, that's gonna come into play as we look at decision packets. These are the numbers. I, to be honest with you, I was actually a little surprised that they're forecasting fifty-five, fifty-two, fifty for the next three years of kindergarten. It seemed like for a while, we, we kept expecting with that one class of seventy, I believe, that we're like, oh boy, you know, we're all holding on and we're walking around the building to see what classrooms we could, what spaces we could convert into classrooms. And if these numbers hold true, we'll, we'll be in a, in an okay spot. But as we know, the, the year that we had seventy, the, the number forecast was fifty-five, I believe. So you don't, you don't always, but that was with a different person's projections. Decision packets, again, these are just a, a brief overview. It's come up at the, at the board level before. It's definitely come up kind of across the board in terms of, I'm finding it's really hard to, to meet the seventh and eighth grade needs at our current capacity. The, the, the increase in the expectation around algebra for eighth grade math. I, I sit in classrooms a lot and to see one person or one person and a support person try to get around to make sure everybody has their needs taken care of in a class of thirty-one is really, really difficult. I think that during the, a couple of board meetings ago, we went through a slideshow that showed that we had thirty-some odd percent that, that was able to pass the eighth grade algebra exam. We are absolutely killing it in reading, writing, science, some of the highest scores in the state. We're really proud about that. But the math is gonna be my next area of focus. And, and I, I really believe that in order to, to do that with the fidelity that we need, we would need an additional classroom teacher up in the seven eights. And I'm gonna put a caveat to this, and, and this is the exact same conversation we had with you last year. Depending on where you decide to go with it, that number for fifty-five, that, that number that we're using for kindergarten, that projection of fifty-five, you know, if that number becomes sixty-five, if that number becomes seventy, we could either be coming back to you with, with a request for an additional or you might come back to us and say, you know, that, that teacher, we just really have to buck up and, and have large classes in the seven eights again. But I just wanna, full disclosure type of thing.
Can you remind me that the board approved last year, was it one position and then the maybe? Was it a maybe we'll decide later in kindergarten? How did that? I'm struggling remembering how it, the vote went.
And Bob, I don't know if you can, I, I believe that there was two new positions in the, in the decision packets last year, but one of them was a teacher that we hired after the budget had already been adopted the previous year.
Right.
So the board, I believe, I mean, we had that teacher already established. You knew about it. So you really did approve one additional teacher to that, but it came out as two new teachers last year.
And, and the caveat was, if you needed it for kindergarten, you're gonna use it for kindergarten, but you really were hoping to fix sixth grade?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And, and numbers held true.
That's what I'm remembering. I just wanna try that right.
Numbers held true in kindergarten and the difference that I've seen in sixth grade is incredible.
Well, we eliminated the family consumer science position as well.
Right.
We should probably find out how that's going too.
These, these next pieces. Allegra and I also feel pretty strongly that our kindergarten first and second graders only having art once a day is.
Once a week.
What, oh yeah, once a week. It, it just isn't enough. We, we have, we're, we're blessed with incredible art teachers and to limit the K-one-twos, the only once a week is, is really challenging. If we, if we had an increase in point two, that would gain us another day so that K-one-twos would have art twice a week.
And what would that take, what spot would that take in the schedule? Like it would have to take a spot of something, right?
No. Well, it would add an additional U-way for the, the K-one-twos.
I guess my question is, don't they have a full schedule?
It would, right now, we have a person who works a point eight and a person that works a point two. So what it would mean is that.
Not the teacher, the students. Do you know what I mean? Like the, the K-one-twos, they all have full schedules. So if they get an extra point two of art, like what is coming out of the kids' schedules?
So it'd be an extra forty minutes a week. And we think it would.
You would, you would just take a look at the whole, I mean, Allegra would take a look at the whole and, and the teachers as well to say, all right, here's, here's our new. The other, you know, this isn't the reason why we're doing it, but the,
Please do.
The, the time that teachers need to, to be able to talk and to collaborate. We do so much looking at student data as a team that anytime that students are in Unified Arts, the teachers are getting together and having those really deep conversations, so. But that's not the reason, but they, they would figure out their schedule so that they can manage.
But is it fair to say that there's, this is a net in the budget because the kids are just being taught by somebody different at that point? Or this is an extra?
It would be an extra, yeah. So it, if, if they had, let's say in their schedule fifteen minutes of free choice time in the morning, twenty minutes of, you know, self-exploration, you know, looking at books and things like that, the teacher may say that on this Tuesday, we might be able to do less of that and then have, or, or if they did, you know, I, the, the arts don't only happen in, in the Unified Arts. So if they're doing some of that on their own, then that would just transfer over to the, to the classroom.
Okay, thanks.
The next piece is my proposal in increasing a point two in the world language program. We've gone back and forth on the board about world language and I wanna share my thoughts. Is that much like algebra in seventh and eighth grade, if we, if we best want to prepare our students for what they're going to be expecting to do or to have the knowledge base going into CBU, my suggestion would be to increase the seven eights so that they would have world language five days a week. And.
Which is the seventh and eighth grade.
Okay. And then I would also take a look at the sixth grade to see with that allocation, if they could go to four times a week.
What are they getting now?
Currently, first and second grade have one time a week. Second.
Third and fourth.
Third, fourth and fifth have it two times a week. Sixth grade has it three times a week and seven eights have it four times a week. When, when I first started, fifth grade had it three times a week. Sixth, seventh, eighth had it four times a week. And we've just been kind of cutting back through, through a need of finding money.
So with the point two, again, do two of those need to be moved?
I would, I would hope that it would increase the seven eights to five days a week and the sixth grade possibly to four days a week. The, the thinking that we also have, that I also have is that the intervention model that we have upstairs in the middle school is that when students are struggling in literacy or math, they work with our, our classroom teachers or parent specialists, things like that. They get pulled out so that they can have just a supplemental program to get them back up to grade level. And then when, when that happens and they, they make the gains that we hope, they have to go back into a, they don't have to, it usually happens opposite world language. So then they get put into a world language where they are then substantially behind where the other students were. So one, one area that I was thinking about is that if we had a five-day-a-week program with the seventh and eighth, one of the classes would be an intermediate and one would be an advanced to really push the students that really had a desire in high school to take it to the next level. Again, kind of in that math, algebra mindset.
So Jeff, I gotta, I gotta get down this road again.
Yeah.
So we're talking about this world language for a while and the need for world language. I think we all agree that world language is important. Maybe we're just talking about the delivery. And I've asked a question a lot of times. I still haven't gotten the answer. Some schools start world language in the SU later, correct?
Correct.
Okay. The question I ask is, and I haven't got the answer is, for us starting earlier, are our kids entering CBU at a higher, better prepared level than kids in other schools in world language? I mean, that's one way to look at it. The other way to look at it is, is maybe we ought to look at the total number of minutes in a career a kid has in world language. But, you know, again, you know, the value, I know I've always heard from Bob, you guys has a schedule, schedule, schedule. But, you know, could those kids at a younger age be doing something different? That wouldn't, I don't know what the answer would be. You know, and then we could switch that time span with them and allocate that time for the teacher to the seventh, eighth grade. And I guess my question is, is, you know, we've been going at, talking about this little kid world language for years and I still don't know, is that money being well-spent to give return on our investment?
I always remember back to what Elaine actually mentions around world language is that if we really did world language the right way, they would have it five days a week in the younger grades and really build it at the, at the early level. So with, with the current model, you know, I could let Allegra speak to a little bit more of the, the mindset that, that I have is that it exposes them that they build the relationship with the teachers so that when they do have it more regularly, it's not, it's not brand new. I don't, it would be hard to find measurables in terms of where are our students entering seventh grade is compared with someone, a, a different school that has world language. We've done, we've some, we've, we've done some work with CBU in terms of where do the students go? You know, how, how does Heinsberg kinda come in at?
That, I guess that's my question. That is my question. I think it's a valid question.
Did you wanna speak to the younger?
No, I think just, if I'm remembering back to last fall when the world language teachers came and did their presentation and they were very favorable of having the students at a younger age, as Jeff said, to develop the relationship, to start them being exposed to not only the language, but the culture and thinking about all the many places they might speak Spanish in the world, including our own country and, you know, how that all would fit into a bigger picture for them as they keep going up in the grades. So they thought it was integral to their program. I've had a brief conversation with a principal from Charlotte who they have found some measurables and they, I haven't gotten into the specifics with them because it's a whole different school and they have it more than once a week. But they, there has been a significant positive influence on the high school when the students get there from their program. And I also think Charlotte has had world language a little bit longer than Heinsberg has. I think their program has been in place longer. So I didn't, I didn't get into quite the comparison, but he had, he had said there was a cause and effect.
So maybe that's one of our questions for another meeting is, can we see the matrix of time allocation across the SU? And I know we had, we had that data last year and maybe that could be updated.
Yeah.
And how are we performing upon entry to CBU? Are we, are we, if we're, if our kids are less prepared?
I don't know if we can get that.
But are we clearly prepared? I don't know. It's just, it's just a question worth asking when you're trying to allocate financial resources.
I mean, we've, we've been discussing this a long time. Jim, I'm sure you remember these discussions going back.
I think it's a very difficult question. And I would say that although we've had many interesting and good language teachers here, the fact that language teachers tell you that you need more language teachers is not overwhelming evidence for that.
Right.
I appreciate that.
Lawyers will tell you that you need more lawyers too.
Present company.
Some, some might say.
The, I guess the only, the only thing that I would say too is, it's, it's not only preparation to, to walk into CBU being, being ready, but it is that exposure, you know, educating the whole child, giving, giving them the experiences and, and unfortunately.
Jeff, you're giving, you're giving exposure to France and, you know, French and Span, and Spanish. You're not giving exposure to Chinese or, or Swahili or Portuguese. I mean, we're looking at.
Two countries.
Two coun, you know, two languages. So, I mean, everyone's not gonna be a Spanish or, or, or French speaker.
I don't, I don't necessarily agree with that statement, but I, they, they do cover many different countries. But the.
Colonialism had a big impact around the world, so.
So I, you know, it's just, I understand that it's a topic that's been brought up. Again, when Allegra and I sit down and we, I think our, our role is to present to you what we feel is best for the students.
I appreciate that.
Can I add something on that? I, I've always wondered that question of how well we're prepared when we enter CBU compared to others. But I think there's another question that I don't know how to get at the answer to, which is which students are the ones that are benefiting from that? And sometimes when I look at the process, I see a focus on all the requirements that we have to meet and all the special needs that we do have to, we want to provide. And I feel like there are times when that daily schedule is changed so much that our potential high achievers or self-motivated kids aren't necessarily getting the opportunity. And I feel like world language might be one of those areas where kids who are moving at a slower pace than they're ready for in math or, you know, they could be moving faster in math, but they're not because of the general population. I feel like, how do we figure out that aspect? You know, if we do take it down, whose opportunity is being cut? That's, you know, I guess the other side of the question in terms of what students are, are needing that broader exposure, that broader stimulation.
So it, I mean, now talking about world languages, but I think part of your question for me gets at the instructional strategies that a teacher uses in differentiation of instruction. And I wonder if maybe part of your question is, how are we making sure that there are different opportunities and different challenges in a classroom, cross-grade levels for kids? When we're trying to be efficient with our program delivery? I mean, that there's always gonna be that balance because you can't have individualized instruction for every child. I mean, supposedly we can by the state law, but, you know, how are we balancing efficiency with differentiating instruction? And I don't know if that's an educator question.
And I don't know, I don't know how to.
But I think that's part of what we should talk about.
I think that's another part of that question. That it's not just about how we stack up to the other local district schools when it comes to serving the whole child and the, the, all. when it comes to serving the whole child and the, the, all the students.
No, yours is a really big question and we should be talking about that continuously throughout the budget.
And the, the board actually made, we, we were involved with some great conversations into reshifting the model. That's really helped us with exactly what you're talking about. And, and I know that Allegra and I couldn't be happier with how the par specialist model worked out because it's, it really is for all students.
So I, you know, I guess to echo what Kristen is saying, maybe as we are working through this, it would be really helpful for us to be reminded of how there is differentiated instruction in the classrooms. Like the math, you know, what is it, thirty-one or kids in a math class? So I know it's not delivery, you know, the bowling ball down the chute and you hit whoever you can that's in the middle. I know that there's differentiation happening in that class. How is that happening? How is, how are we stretching the limits of that so that we can rationalize adding staffing? Because, you know, you can only differentiate so long and then you cut it. You hit your limit with the number of kids that you're dealing with. So I guess that's a question.
Do we, yeah. Maybe just more data that, that supports what we're looking at and kind of a.
Just remind, remind us how it happens.
Right.
We can do that.
Can I make a comment?
Yes.
At this point?
Yeah. The school board chair.
Can I make a comment?
Yes, please.
I totally appreciate that our school wants to have as well around student depression. I'm surprised that you're not proposing any increases in instructional supports for science, technology, engineering, math, which is the future of job markets for students. Are you going there next?
Uh, no, but just, I, I feel, I feel like our staffing allocations are, are right on par where, where the, the work that's happening in the classrooms is, is spot on to, to your question. I mean, we, I feel really solid with that. Like I've said, the, the science, the, the literacy, you know, the reading and the writing, we're, we're, we're doing very well. And I think that the, the area of focus, which we addressed last year with adding a, a sixth grade teacher and, and to this, will reduce class sizes across the entire seven, eight, where there can be that more laser-like focus because you have smaller class sizes. So having said that, we have, Allegra and I, there is going to be a slide coming up. We're, we're hoping to replenish the supply line and that mainly goes with the MGSS.
National Science Standards.
National, next, next generation science standards. And so, so the, the material, the resource piece of it is definitely on our radar, giving the students the exposure. Pi just was able to give a grant to one of our teachers that's really looking at the engineering component in her classroom that can be shared. So it's definitely on our radar.
At this SU level too, our, our in services have been science geared. I mean, we spent, Angela and myself today, tremendous amount of time working on adding engineering to science units. So it's definitely a push that's going on right now across the SU.
But again, taking a look at the whole program, Allegra and I, beside the supply piece of it, we aren't seeing a huge need to bring in somebody from the outside to do science like our teachers are.
And I think with technology, and that's a good point too, our, we do have a half time tech educator and we're being much more efficient with her time. And she gave a great presentation to the board, whenever that was, last week. And she's working with every grade level every week with teachers in the planning piece, which is really where the essential, it's not just having her in the computer lab to work with kids. So it's really getting, how are we going to integrate technology within the curriculum? Looking at our new assessment and how can we design and support teachers with that? So I think this year especially, there's been a lot more happening with technology. And just from another lens, teachers in their professional development plan, their goals for their supervision and evaluation system, they all have a technology goal to K four, I'm not sure about five eight, but that's something that we've talked about. And so I think that we're really looking at that from all sorts of, not just putting another person on, but how do we, how, how can we be more efficient with what we have?
Not, not a pity party for Jeff. I haven't been out of bed all day today and I'm, I'm gonna need to sit down in a second. So I'm gonna run through these and then we can have the conversation at my seat, hopefully. So we're looking to increase salary of behavior interventionists. The, the reason behind this is that we, we found somebody who has made a tremendous difference in our building and without this, we'll probably have to start from scratch next year.
It really just brings them up to the level of the current.
It's not a huge increase.
It's not.
And, and those numbers will be shared with you next year.
So how is that person contracted with us? Is he or she not under one of the existing teacher support staff contracts?
But, correct, it's not part of the bargain.
It's an independent contract?
Yeah.
I alluded to this just a second ago. So last year we took sixty thousand dollars out of the budget, not just in supplies, but across the board. Where, where, we've, when Bob was here, you talked, you know, he talked to you about really cutting it thin. I cut it pretty thin last year with, with my recommendations. We're okay, but in order to, to replenish it to the smallest degree, I think a lot of people are working with things and it's chairs, desks, a lot of things that have been neglected for a long time. As you see the hodgepodge of colors of chairs and. Bill, I have to eat a little crow here. So at the last budget meeting nearly, Bill made a mention, he's like, I'm so glad these are in the general fund and, and I, I forgot to adjust it. What, what happened is that we had about sixty thousand dollars in this year's budget for expenses and things like that. And I, I made the assumption that that was going to carry over to our baseline. What I didn't realize is that thirty thousand of it was part of our construction fund, which we used up. So I have to, I have to go back and adjust. But if we, if we stuck with our five year capital improvement plan, these are the two additional pieces that we would have to cover out of our, they would, we would have to put that money back into the budget.
What about lawn care services, Tim?
So, great question, so lawn care services. Tim and I had a conversation about whether it made sense to have an independent contractor come out, come to our school and take care of the lawns for us. And it was about a net even based on how much they're charging us, which the, it's about fourteen thousand dollars. We have four thousand dollars allocated. And how much a person like that we would hire would cost us for the summer and, and their. So it was pretty much a net neutral in terms of how much they're charging us based on how much we would pay somebody to do that service for us.
Are we doing it now?
So now we, we've contracted out of.
Oh, you have?
Yeah.
So if it's a net neutral, why is it ten grand more?
Because on the other side of things, that additional person that came in to, to mow our lawns, that HCS employee isn't there anymore in that budget line. So let's say, so let's say Johnny did the lawns for us, he was a HCS employee, we paid him ten thousand dollars to do that. That's in, Bob, you might have to save me on this one.
Uh-oh.
So, so it's.
If it's net neutral, I don't know why it's a ten thousand increase, that's my question.
I don't think it was in the general fund, it was in the fund.
I, I, the example that I use for the lawn care services is that the offset here comes from the, the sal- the, the, the salary of the employee that no longer has to provide the service to us.
Uh, it could. I thought those were increases after you and I and Tim went through his needed budget across all areas for next year. So I, I don't think you and I want to leave anybody with the impression there's an offset for those.
Can, can Bob and I sit down?
We'll dig into the details.
Okay, yeah, my point is for hiring someone at fourteen grand, we're gonna pay someone, hire a guy and pay twenty-four, why are we doing that?
No, 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 no. So that, I know that that's not the, the case. How much we were spending for that guy, so we'll.
You can get back to me, you can get back.
Yeah.
So reduction in expenses, these would be what I would deem positive budget impact. So again, when we take a look at the entire building, we, we see where we, where we need and then where we might have too much. And so we have a point three net administrative decrease that has been there. It's in, it's also in this year's budget. But Allegra and I have figured out a way to make it work. So that would be a, a cost savings or a reduction in expenses. There's a.
Hold, hold on one second.
So.
If we've cut it out for this year's budget, is it back in the baseline?
Yeah, it is.
It has to be.
Okay.
Well, yeah, it was a conversation that we had when we looked at the baseline because we were.
You did it in September, right?
Right.
It was after the fiscal year started.
Okay.
But when, internally, when we looked at the baseline to figure out what we want, we, Allegra and I, we're, we're still, we're doing okay without that level of service, but I mean, we.
And we're taking on the responsibility.
We, we wanted to make sure that we kept it in there. There's a, there's a para educator decrease that we've, again, figured out how to manage with one less.
Right, because didn't we approve seven and you only needed six or something like that?
A, a different para educator, not the para specialist.
Oh, okay.
So this would, in the budget line, this would be under the title.
Title one, but it's not title one.
Yeah.
What people know it as, monster.
We do have.
Used to get big with title one funds, but then it became part of our general.
Better picture would be to, to say across the full array of para educators, they've figured out a way to do with one less. Across that full array, this is that one less, tying it to anything else would just.
So this is basically a position that was never filled, that was approved.
It has not been filled this year.
Correct. It's not like, right, okay.
Uh, we, we do have one retirement. And that, the delta between the, the person that we hire in and the, uh, that person's salary is going to be a little bit different. And I, I believe there's also going to be a healthcare adjustment.
From, from the assumption?
Ten percent. And Jeff is reading the tea leaves. Prior to getting any formal letter from anyone, that the number will be far less than ten percent.
You have some numbers filled in in some of these, but not in others? I assume when these are finalized for presentation?
This is just kind of a, a first glimpse.
Since you've given a lot of thought to these, do you have a general sense ballpark wise whether, one, two, three, these first four, where they come out relative to this last one?
Uh, it'll be an increase. Yes. I don't know. Little bit bigger than this. Is the scale this or is the?
We're, we're working on the numbers, Keith, and we, we really didn't want to put a number out there that we know we would have to change the minute others start joining in the conversation, so.
Can I ask a question?
Big pic, big question, little question, specific question?
Specific.
Yeah, go ahead.
Can you remind me on the seventh and eighth grade, I remember last year there being discussions about how seventh and eighth grade work and that there's a pool of students and they have a homeroom, but they kind of float around between math and science and their different educational topics together. So how does adding a math, does adding a math teacher really fix the total class size across all, you know what I mean? So I think, I think you take the hundred and whatever it is, divide by four, but does it really work by adding a teacher?
Math is the, math is the area of focus. On there, didn't it say math teacher, it said one classroom teacher? So what it will do is it will, it'll add another teacher. So instead of being four, so if you have a hundred and, well, let's just use a hundred because it's an easy number. Instead of having classes of twenty-five, you would have classes of twenty, even though it's more than a hundred.
So the seventh and eighth grade teachers teach all topics?
Uh, no, so, uh, but they, their kids are in grade specific content areas for math and science. So the seventh grade goes to math with only seventh graders, same with eighth grade literacy and social science. It's, um, it's not, so the, it's seventh and eighth graders combined.
So the, so the disciplines, so the addition of the one FTE, the discipline specific for, what would the endorsement be for?
We would have to restructure the classes upstairs. So that there's a, there's a bunch of different ideas. We could do a, a three and a two. So we could have a three person team and a two person team where all the, the disciplines would be covered in both teams. So one person would be social science, literacy, the other person would be math, science on that two person team. There's also an idea of having a four person team and, and having math standalone. But I didn't wanna, I didn't wanna get to that point until having the conversation. And, you know, if, if it comes to be where we have that dilemma to solve, it, it will decrease the numbers.
I just, I just, I'm not necessarily opposed to it, I just was curious how it was gonna work.
Are we doing any six seventy?
Well, my guess is whoever you hire is going to have more than one endorsement because that's kind of how it works in middle level education. That's best practice. And so that opens up lots of possibilities about how you might regroup kids for best.
To make it work.
But might they go down into grade six? Because usually the endorsement would be.
Five through eight.
Yeah.
Five through nine, middle school, right.
And then seven, twelve is the other endorsement.
But your focus would be grades seven, eight.
I wanted to let Jeff sit before I ask the question.
Thank you.
I had a big picture question.
Me too.
You want to go ahead?
You go, you go first.
All right.
Well, you're the chair, but, you're the chair, but.
So you, you've gotten a lot of specific questions on each of the potential decision packets. I'm not meaning to tamp discussion on those if you have further questions. But what do you need from us tonight? Was your goal just to present them to get us thinking about them? Or do you want some sort of big picture feedback, yeah, this might fly, yeah, this one's not gonna fly?
No, it, it was mainly just to present them and to, to give you a glimpse of what we're thinking about so that if, if there were questions like Bill's that we had to go back to and, and do a little bit more digging and, you know, there are questions like that, that we could come back when we actually present the decision packets where they, the, the discussion is more vigorous and, and we can make some decisions.
Because, because we're clearly not making any decisions on these because in my view, you haven't formally presented them. So you're not asking for a decision. And we certainly can't make a decision tonight, anyway.
I think what would be interesting for and helpful for the administrators is if they had a sense of what increase is the board comfortable with? You know, is there, is there some number that you're all sitting with and you're going like, wow, you know, there is no darn way I could go above that number?
Mine is probably a little higher.
I think that, which was.
Three point two.
Let me, let me throw the.
Point two.
Can I put my, my comment, question, group thing out there? Because that kind of goes around this. My fear is, I'll speak to the board chair myself. I think you've articulated for several years. And now frankly, it's, it's not, it's not like I have a game for my own children who are older, but you get more exposure to what's going on when your kids get older, is that the seventh and teacher is close to vital to add that position. That's my gut feeling.
Is what?
Close to vital.
Is important.
Yes. Beyond important, close to vital, so. Got it, no, that's good. Urgent.
Vital is near death.
Urgent. So my second comment is, is my fear is, is that we get a sixty-four student kindergarten.
Right, I was wondering the same thing.
So then, then where we left, so at that point.
What do you do?
Just keep in mind, we all want to add things always. And when you add things, it's hard to take them away, it's just the nature of the beast. I'm not saying we should add point two art. My kids complain that they only get art once a week, my sixth graders. I'm not, contrary to the discussion we had, I'm not saying we shouldn't add the point two language, but are we able to add a full class, two full classroom teachers and then two? but are we able to add a full class, two full classroom teachers and then two point twos? That's, that's what I'd like you folks to think about.
Well, I heard an additional one classroom, and that's because of a known population.
I think, I think-
My point is-
It's speculation.
Correct, if, if it comes to that, that's, that's my question, is that, my fear is, is that-
Do we go with the known or the unknown?
I just think we have to think about it, and the administrators have to think about it, you know, giving us flexibility or you had flexibility in mind of a game plan of, if we decide to add the, the sixth, seventh, eighth grade teacher, and then, and, when do we do that, when do we do the kindergarten registration, is that March?
April, beginning of April, end of March.
So the budget's done then, and then they come to us and you come back to us and say, hey, we're going to get sixty-four kindergartners this year. We can't be put in a position where, I don't want to be put in a position where our, our budget increases at a number that, whatever number we're not comfortable with, we think may be at the ceiling, and then you come back to us and saying, hey, we need to add fifty-five thousand more for-
Right, but the reality is, you can say, go ahead and hire, but you can't say, they can't go ahead and add to the budget. They need to find that money. At that point, they need to find the money in the budget, because there's no mechanism for increasing money to the budget after people vote on the budget. That's the budget. So when they come to you with that kind of a really sticky problem at that point in the year, it really is a sticky problem all around, and you have to make it work, bottom line.
But we do have the ability to deficit spend and then we've got to make it up next year, right?
No, not really, no, you're not-
No, the dilemma would occur in the spring, prior to the year beginning. What you'd likely do is, is bless the hiring of the additional kindergarten teacher and challenge the two of them to somewhere in the year from September to the following June, come up with enough savings that it's not deficit spending.
What, you're reading about the Burlington spending, that's not how it's supposed to be done.
No, 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 no.
And I would say we don't do that, we say we don't deficit spend.
But I think the way Jeff presented it was, here's something I would like to fix. If kindergarten is a problem, I don't think we're going to go down that path, isn't that what you said? That's how I heard it.
I'm sorry, kindergarten?
The way you presented the decision to add a teacher, you didn't, it didn't say seventh and eighth grade on the board, it said one teacher, and you said, what I would like to fix is seventh and eighth grade. However, if kindergarten poses a problem, that's where we're going to put the money. That's what I heard, was I, was I not right?
It would come back to the board.
We would do some different thinking. It's hard to do a lot of thinking on that speculation.
My, I, in terms of Colleen's question, I, I go with what's known. So my, my thought process with that one teacher would be that it would be a seventy teacher, and it's always hard, you know, as there's movement and things like that, but, so, for purposes of the decision packet, I'd like you to think of that as a seventh and eighth grade. And then if, if that's not something the board is willing to, to bless, then, then it would be zero with the, because I'm just going from the known, that we have fifty-five potential kindergartners coming in, and if that number is higher, then it's going to be the same process. And April coming back to you to say-
So let me rephrase what I just said before then, so I appreciate that. So we got a teacher, great, good, good deal. I don't want you folks to be in a position that if we have, it comes to a point where we feel like we want to add another teacher, we can't because we can't fund the money in the budget to add that teacher. How about that, does that sound, is that a better?
Yep, that works.
I, I'm not sure I understand that.
Okay, so, what I'm saying is, is if we decide, we go to the decision packet, we decide to add additional teachers, at this point, we're pointing to seventh grade.
Yeah.
And then April comes, and they come to the board and say, hey, we want to, we've got a huge kindergarten teacher, class coming, want to add another teacher. I want to make sure they put themselves in a position that at that point, they can't find the money to do that.
They can-
Can, are able to. Don't paint themselves in a quarter so tightly with this process that they won't be able to find that money.
Well, I mean, in the past, I mean, historically, that's not atypical. I mean, that happens probably every four years. You know, just something happens and all of a sudden you need to find another educator to help support the school. So, it would not be unusual for administrators to come and say, look, we're in a crunch. We realize we've got to deal with this population. We'll figure out where the money is, and somehow, I don't know how they do it, but somehow they've been able to do it in the past, so.
Cheers.
I would, I would, I mean, I would really hope that administrators and boards have that kind of positive relationship that we can support each other in that.
I agree.
How many students are in the eighth grade that are departing of this hundred and seven? Like, what does your class size look like next year if you assume all-
Fifty-eight.
Fifty-eight.
So it'll be a little smaller next year.
Because I can't read those small numbers, fifty-eight?
Then it'll be a little smaller next year, but not by, two years from now, there'll be that little class move, right?
So someone's figuring out, is the hundred and seven going up or down?
Six is fifty-five and eight is fifty-eight.
So I think the-
Seventh is different.
It's not an unfortunate part, this would be a one-year effect, as people are alluding to, that there's a class of forty-four in fifth grade this year.
Followed by one of sixty-something behind them.
I know, sort of, yeah.
But it all depends on what happens with the kids as they continue on.
I think we have a, I think we will have a challenging vote if the increase is greater than last year's.
I agree.
That's not, unfortunately, that doesn't give you a lot of, it's not, not, not a lot of detail behind it, but that would be my kind of, where, where we're going needs to hover in the range of last year's increase, if not a tiny bit below it.
Oh, we're really close.
Because we're at Australian ballot, we don't have the opportunity to discuss.
Do we have any sense at this point what a two percent or three percent change in the budget does to the change in people's tax rates, or is it way too early to tell that?
Way too early to tell. As soon as we get information, we'll allow us to have an intelligent conversation, and we'll have it with you.
And we have a budget meeting where we discuss tax impact, right?
We're going to do that at your next meeting.
So Dave, it's almost like you and I chatted earlier because you're like feeding me the softballs that I've been waiting for. In more specific answer to your question, one of the Budget Buddy pages that was put together, which is,
That was really good.
Item, it says item ten on the top, but it says nine, local tax rate calculation. That I would love to draw everyone's attention to. There are five things that drive the local tax rate.
Right.
Spending per pupil, statewide base amount, statewide education tax rate, percentage of total students in local community enrolled in this school, and this common level of appraisal. Now, percentage of students enrolled in this school, we can't control, but it's going to be a hundred percent, pretty much. Yes, there are going to be some kids going to private school and such. We can only control that first one, spending per pupil. We can't control any of the other three major drivers of what the tax rate is. So, as I've said before, we are very cognizant of the ramification of the tax rate. We do our best through our administrators to figure out what that's going to be throughout this process, but we can't control that. We can only control what we spend in the budget and what the per pupil spending ends up being. So, that's what I like to focus on, what we can control.
Which is the, you know, the spending budget separate from tax rate, there need to be two.
Yep.
Can I ask a question, since I have not been deeply involved in the process for several years? How does the, is it, does, do we still this year have that two-step vote?
No, the two-step feature sunsetted, not last year, but the prior year.
Okay.
We still have the penalty threshold, where if your spending per pupil goes above a certain number, you begin to pay taxes on twice the rate than you otherwise would have paid.
Yeah, yeah, I remember that.
That's still an excellent feature of the tax law.
But, but we are probably not in danger of hitting that because our budget is going to, our expenditures are probably going to be around what they were last year, a few percentage higher, and our per pupil count is going up.
To date, to date, you are correct. You've had room, but I'll caution you, this law that changed last year was in essence to, to bring the lines closer together, so more of you were in trouble than less.
Okay.
So their intent is that in time, much like No Child Left Behind, we'll all be behind, or all be in, at some point.
We'll all be identified.
Lines cross, so. So we're going to keep a close eye on that and anything we do with tax rates this year, every year going forward.
And Bob, what are you hearing at the state level related to the deficit that's been in the news over the past couple of weeks? Like the hundred million dollars or whatever it is?
I don't, I don't hear anything encouraging from either those who purport to have a degree of control or those that do. I mean, it just, it's, there's, there's more things reaching into the pot to take money out than there are taxpayers putting money in. So the only way the state has to balance that is increase the statewide tax rate so that more is generated to cover more expenses. The big piece this year, oh, a number of them, the, the, what's the partnership with high schools and college?
Dual enrollment.
Dual enrollment is an added cost, the pre-K program, not the, the ELP, but the strengthening of that whole program is costing money, and those things have to be made up at some point in time. So I'm not, I'm not optimistic that the letter will be comfortable once we get it from the Tax Commissioner on what the recommended tax rates are for the legislature to consider. Wish I had a different story, but that's what I'm hearing.
Another question. But for the change in accounting practice with the special ed becoming centralized, do we know what that two-point-oh-seven increase would have been without that, this change in accounting? That may be an impossible question, I don't know that, but, but that, as a taxpayer, that's something that, you're seeing a big shift in numbers from, yes is going down, that's going up. And to me, I like to know well, whenever someone sees that, they always think, ah, there's monkey business going on. But, you know, really what impact is that having on that two-point-oh-seven? Would it have been, or would it have been negative? What would it have been? I imagine it's not much, but.
Let us take a shot at the us in that sentence. If he was here speaking, he'd be saying, no, it's, it's a number you're not going to be able to get to. The, the number of variables that just switched on us is just so complex that, that we'd have to lecture you for about two hours to share with you with it. But, but let us see if we can rough in, more me rough in and him help me, because he doesn't like to do those things. Some way to look at it and understand whether you're in better shape. I would have you conclude that in generally, you're in, you're in better shape. This is not a bad place to start in comparison to how you started any of the last four or five years, so. And it's not like the special ed costs have disappeared, they've just changed to the line they appear in your budget, so. That'd be my commentary, but we'll take a shot at trying to carve it up a little bit so that, as much so you have a story to tell taxpayers when they begin to question out what really happened.
I'm just glad it's not a double-digit number in that bottom right corner, so.
Next meeting's agenda?
I think I wanted to try to finish the request. I heard from Kathy, does any other board member want to kind of give them a sense of what you might be comfortable with?
Three sounds, I don't know why, but three seems that the committee expects.
Cost of living and so forth.
You know.
But, I mean, the, what is it, the NEEP, the education, was it New England?
The Economic Price Index.
Yes, so maybe you can get us some information related to that because it's different from the CPI.
We do have that number.
Okay.
I don't have it right here in front of me in this folder, but that was published.
Okay.
That's the New England Economic Price Index that most of state laws where they need a, a year-to-year cost of living adjustment, the state uses.
Because there's state employees and so forth that are the bulk of the budgets and not goods.
Well, Bob, I can tell you that as a federal employee, I have gotten a total increase of one percent over the last three years, so I think you should do the same for this budget here. Can you work on that?
Yes.
Well, you know, all kidding aside, there are a lot of people in town that are in that situation.
Or no increase or not.
That's why the NEEP will be helpful.
Yeah.
Well, our biggest loan item, we know it, that increases, so.
Right.
Biggest loan item is a three-and-a-quarter increase, it's going to be hard to keep it at any, you know, three, you're still trimming fat, trimming, you know, and so, trying to get below that three number. When you're giving three-and-a-quarter increase to salaries, it's going to be, I know it's new money, blah, 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 but it is what it is, it's going to be hard to go below that number, so.
The number for the NEEP index is three-point-one percent. It's like you all had read that before you came around.
Kathy knew, she's brilliant.
No, what's amazing is that, just standing still, we have a two-point-oh-seven percent increase, so we get to play with a whole entire point-nine-three percentage point.
And this is the first time ever that we've had, well, since I've been here, that we're not trying to cut six percent.
I guess that's right.
I saw that number, I was very happy. Sorry.
I, I agree with Kathy, what Kathy said is, you know, we just, and Bill, I don't know where you've landed yet, Stacy, but I think around that three percent is, I think that we could provide a, a story for the public that they might accept.
Yeah, I think for me, obviously a new board member, it's hard for me to kind of guess what percentage is, is or isn't right. I think in the end of the day, just being responsible about where we're spending money in general is what I would want to see, and that decisions are being made on a need basis, not a want basis. So for me, it's more around that than it is where we land as a number. If in the end of the day, the school needs a seventh and eighth grade teacher and a kindergarten teacher, and it ends up being more than three percent, I'm not going to say I don't care, but that's more important to me than the actual number itself.
Yeah.
So I think it's just being responsible with how we spend the money and trimming fat where we can and adding what we think is of most value.
And if it means using a program, then we would need to be able to say that, something has to go.
Right. I don't know.
I, I don't, I, I hope you all know me well enough to know that I agree with Stacy's sentiment that, you know, I'll spend for what needs to get spent on. And as long as there's a good story that we can use to explain that, that's fine with me. And I also recall something I think Colleen has said on numerous occasions during the years I've been on the board or even before I was on the board, that it's a lot more fun to add things than it is to take away. So, I'm, while I'm very glad that we're in a position where we might be able to add things this year, because that'll be a lot more fun, I think we still need to be cognizant of increases to budgets.
Agreed.
And although my wife will tell you these words have never passed my lips before, just because you're going to save some money through some reconfigurations of things or retirements or health plans coming in less, doesn't mean you should go out and spend it. So, I, I'm, I'm somewhat surprised to, I think, to tell you that I'm coming in less than where everyone else is.
Yeah.
I'd, I'd rather see something in the two-and-a-half range. If we need to go to three, if there's a good reason, of course I'm going to stand behind it, but.
That's sort of what I was trying to say. Need.
Yeah, needs versus wants.
Right.
And I'll get behind the need a hundred percent.
Right.
May I ask a question, a process question?
Yes, please.
In terms of the cuts that have taken place over the last five years, how do we assess that impact? You know, because it's not a, they're a done deal, and we're not talking about, okay, those are all back on the table to add back to the budget. It's cumulative. So, the fact that we eliminated the family and commuters, consumer science position, you know, how do we make sure we're not just assuming that the cuts were smart rather than necessary? You know, that-
I think my answer to that is twofold. One is the collective experience of the people sitting around this table that can remember past budget processes to remember. For example, one thing I didn't note is, you know, on the supplies one, that's a no-brainer to me because I've been sitting here for five or six years, and I remember cutting it every year. And so it's not surprising that you're coming back and saying, look, we need to put some of that back in. So I think people would remember that. The second answer is, that's what we look to our administrators for. So if they look at something that has been eliminated or reduced in a past budget, and they say, hey, this is really affecting our program, we need to revisit whether we should have done that or should undo it.
Yeah.
But less so if, it, less so if they're feeling that they've gotta come into a number between two and three percent. I mean, I, I, I guess that's, this is the first time that I've been aware in the process about how much pressure there is on them to couch what is necessary and smart, you know, that, that juggling act. And that, it's the first time that I've been aware that that, of how much pressure you're under, to really.
And the real important part of that juggling act is getting a, a budget passed with the voters in March, which keeps everybody honest. Because everybody in this room wants to pass a budget in March. Because when you don't pass a budget, you get much less than what you thought you were gonna get, not just a little bit less. And you expend a ton of energy getting that so much less. So it's really important. It's like, nobody wants to really leave money on the table, and yet at the same time, we wanna make sure we're on the side of this, that we're gonna get a budget passed.
And I think.
And this two percent, three percent, or wherever it ends up landing, expenditure increase is one piece of what gets presented to the taxpayers as, oh, your taxes are going up ten percent.
Right.
So, it's just one part of it.
Yeah.
Hey, yeah, say something with regard to what Kristen said. I think this is true, I hope this is true. I thi, I think that's how we used to do it, at least, in the historical past. Um, but to the extent that, I mean, you, the administrators are aware of what, what's been cut the last few years. But I think that the, the, the packages, the options that you, that you offer the board, um, those are your, what you consider are the, the most valuable options there, as opposed to restoring something different that may have been cut. Is that, is that fair?
Absolutely true.
And, and to that point, I think the other piece is that, um, you have two frugal administrators. We're constantly looking to see what we can do more with knowing that every year it's gonna be a little bit less. And, um, so I mean, we're, we're kind, and it's not anything that Elaine has told us, or Keith has told us, but we understand the impact that it has across the community. Um, we're not gonna put anything in front of you that we don't think is necessary. But, uh, again, at the end, it's, it's, there's a lot of factors, and we understand it, and, but our, our, our job is to present to you what, what we feel is necessary.
The last meeting, we had the presentation on technology, and there was a lot of discussion around one-to-one this and that in terms of technology resources in the school, iPads or smartphones, or whatever they were called. Would that be something that would be a decision packet item if you were going down that path, or it would just be a line item on here that's increasing? And, and are you making any decisions, I guess, regarding that?
Yeah, so we'll, um, for, for as long as I've been here, again, um, everything that we've done around technology has always been in the, the existing budget. And we've just, we've just re-allocated how we spend the money.
Right, okay.
So moving on, this year we have zero desktops that we're purchasing for the first time ever. So it's just, um, taking a look at what we have in terms of a budget number, and trying to figure out. And, uh, and with that being said, we're, we're gonna be in a very good spot next year. To Kate's question too, is why don't you see anything on the technology side of things, is because we've been very smart, I think, you know, to tap ourselves on the back a little bit, knowing that this is coming, that every year we've, we've shifted our focus.
Yeah, right. Okay, great.
Timmy and Paul?
Next?
Also.
Yeah, I am too. And I think, they, I think just by what you're saying, is, as far as, you know, what, what the need is, and, and, and to, to get across to us, you know, public, how great a need it is to educate as much as possible.
No wonder if part of our presentation is just a reminder of, um, Common Core and next-gen science standards, and, and the professional development that goes along with that, and how tech and innovation and so forth are integrated into that, and that might be helpful for us as well. You know, cause there, there's an awful lot of pressure on teachers for innovation and changing their instructional practice, and we should probably be reminded of, of the supports that are going, that are in the budget that helped them with that work as well.
As part of the budget process?
Yeah, yeah, cause we need to be able to explain that to the community. Um, you know, I'm not sure where that falls in, but making sure that we have a good understanding of, you know, it's not just kids in a classroom, and it doesn't look like it did thirty years ago. Things are really different, so what are the practices that are going on, and what are the supports for our educators and professional development that are supporting the innovation and STEM and so forth?
But that would be during the, the budget meeting before town meeting? Is that what you're thinking?
I, I don't know, just, you know, along, as we're going along.
It's kind of what I was thinking. When you were talking, I was thinking, that sounds like the, the meeting or the board plans, or how are we going to. Well, and how we're gonna inform the public at the, at the forum that happens prior to the town meeting. And put a package together that really focuses on, here are the opportunities for kids, here is the professional development for teachers, here's really the, a focus.
And that, that, that can come through becoming aware of those things during this process and our regular board meetings.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, I like to say that budgeting really happens year-round. Every single presentation you have at a board meeting helps inform you about years, what's going on in our school that we support with tax dollars.
I mean, it, just the increase of point-two FTE for the art, for me, that's as much about STEM as it is for art. You know, whatever art is, so. I'll climb off my soapbox.
Next meeting, three things on the agenda. We'll begin with a recap of any questions you've asked us to answer between now and your next meeting. We'll then update material you've already got. So for example, we've led you to believe we might be hearing something from the Tax Commissioner, or VisVid, our healthcare provider. Uh, we could be getting some more firmer numbers on ADM and equalized pupil count. Anything we'll have, we'll update in the second part of next week's meeting, or not next week, but your next meeting. And then finally, you'll spend the balance of the meeting on the decision packets, the details, and lead your conversation to some sort of decision before you leave the room at your next meeting. So that's the planned agenda. And we look forward to hearing from you regularly between now and your next meeting, through Keith.
Gotta get the plug.
Thanks, Keith.
You're welcome. Thank you. Any final thoughts, questions, or are we ready to, hey, it's a formal meeting, I think I need a motion to adjourn.
So I'm.
You can't do that, though. I would love it, but I can't do that.
That was Kathy who said.
Thanks, Kathy.
There we go. That was a different voice.
Thank you, Stacy. All those in favor? Motion carries. Thank you very much, everybody.